Just a person having the ability to say, "I don't want the cat." And then we have all these examples. Because I have dogs. That's a whole different environment.
Absolutely.
The effect it has. That's just me. Many of my neighbors have dogs. So it's not just a cat roaming around, hanging out, and it doesn't create other issues. These are real, real issues. You talked about how smart they are. They know not to come within the fence boundary, but they could cause a lot of problems. Okay? I've seen, right there off of Willow, I've seen someone get cited for the barking ordinance because of a cat. It causes other problems. And tonight, I've asked three different occasions, and I haven't heard anything that even seemed like an interest to correct a concern. And that concerns me. And you're telling me to wait 90 days?
No, I'm saying it's going to take 90 days for us to implement it. My concern...
But it's part of the ordinance now.
Yes.
It's part of the ordinance. If you want to correct it, take it out the ordinance, fix it, then bring it in. But you don't pass an ordinance that you tell me you're going to fix after you pass it.
The trap neuter return component will not work if everybody that traps a cat has the ability to say, "I don't want it back." We have no choice. They can't adopt them. They're feral. They can't be rescued. They either euthanize or they're returned. There's no other option.
But everything I heard here tonight say that, I'm talking about a single individual.
Right.
I gave one example, but everything that I heard in opposition to that says that that doesn't happen. So you might be talking about one individual. You might be talking about one case. Because everyone else accepts it. Everyone else is okay with it. So how can you tell me in one breath that we don't have any complaints after this, but one person who's saying, "I'm telling you now I don't want it," we can't honor that one person?
I think the difference is, the people that are returning it do not realize that it will not continue to be a problem. So the lion's share of them are going to say, "I don't want it back." They think it's going to continue to be a problem. But it hasn't in Waco, it wasn't in Tulsa, and it wasn't in all the other cities that have implemented this. It hasn't been a continuous problem. The people don't realize it won't be a continuous problem. So you'll probably have 80% of the people who trapped the cat saying, "I don't want it back," and our euthanasia fee won't drop at all.
Mr. Boudreaux? I guess you didn't hear my opening statement when I first started. The people who trap them, it's a nuisance already. You see, what you're not recognizing, would some people consider nuisance, would other people consider nuisance, that's gauged.
I get that.
So what I'm telling you is that if someone, my definition is that if someone takes the time, because this, the trapping will not take place upon somebody seeing a cat appear. That don't happen.
I agree.
This is after a long period of time, after you realize the cat ain't going anywhere. Then they go through these measures that has been mapped out to trap the cat and bring it in. It's a nuisance, Rob. That's a nuisance right there, is what I'm telling you. By definition. You're saying that it's not. You're saying that, "Oh, no, we're going to fix that." And when upon return, those things no longer happen. The nuisance appeared, the nuisance came into play when the person who didn't want cats on their property, the cat appeared. That's what I'm trying to tell you. Is what we having a problem here with, is what is the definition of a nuisance?
I agree.
Mr. Boudreaux, I think I still have the floor, and if I might add to your conversation?
Yeah, go ahead. You do have the floor, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. You bring up a good point.
I didn't realize you wasn't clear. I thought you was done. I apologize.
No, that's fine. And getting to his point is that what did we do prior to this being presented to us right now? When somebody caught an animal and brought it in and said it was a nuisance? What happened?
When people were euthanized, 92% of them.
I mean...
Our live outcome rate in 2015 was less than 9%.
So the second part here is, how often do you get individuals that come in and say, "This is a nuisance animal," and that, you know, it's causing problems, it needs to be euthanized?
Well, they didn't have to say it was a nuisance. They just caught it and brought it in, and it was euthanized.
Okay. But in this instance, if you have an individual that comes in and specifically states it's a nuisance, if you can't place it somewhere else, then it is euthanized. Is that correct? Under this new ordinance? Because you're going to have another, a number of people, even...
Yeah, there are not other alternatives aware to place them, yes.
Right. So there are alternatives in not necessarily going back to, say, Mr. Boudreaux's neighborhood. If he doesn't want that cat there, the effort's going to be made to try and find another location or someone to take that, that animal and relocate it in another area. Is that correct?
The feral cats live in colonies, and you just can't go bring them to another area. It doesn't, it doesn't work like that. I'm not a feral cat expert. We have some in the room, but it doesn't work like that. And if you'd like to hear from them, they could address that.
Okay. Well, I thought I read somewhere, or maybe it was one of the vets I talked to that said that even some of these, these animal care providers, well, some of them will even take them out of state or wherever they're, they need to go in order to place them. Is that a true statement?
Not for feral cats, absolutely not. Feral cats are not brought out of state. The cats that are brought out of state are cats or kittens that are domesticated.
Got you.
Feral cats are not rescued out of state.
Okay.
They're returned or they're euthanized.
Okay.
That's options.
Now, Mr. Boudreaux, just taking it a little step further, and we've done this many times before, the council has the ability to amend this at this time. If that's something that you might be interested in doing, to, to put some kind of verbiage in here to, to stop those animals from going back to your location. So I don't know if that's something to consider, because we need to amend the $75 euthanasia fee and also, and, you know, eventually, in order to add the verbiage about, you know, if somebody's going to sign off on it. So with that said, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Abear?
All right. A question for you. I'm a big believer in marrying communities that have done it right.
Yes.
And you've mentioned, you've seen it, they, those communities have seen improvements with these sort of ordinances. How long, or maybe they can answer the question, is how long did it take to see improvements in this particular situation that we're discussing? Because I'm hesitant, while I certainly understand where Mr. Boudreaux, Mr. Terrio are coming from in this situation, is I'm hesitant to change something before we've seen the results. Because it may, I guess my question before I get into that is how long until they saw results?
I think the gentleman, I think y'all have some handouts from Waco. Their first year when they began dealing with that, their, their live exit rate was 33%. Our live exit rate on cats last year was 23. It went from 33, the next year it went to 61, the next year it went to 83, the next year it went to 89, and the next year it went to 91.
Mm-hmm.
That was in one, two, three, four years.
Yeah. So about a three-year, okay, so...
Their live exit rate doubled in 12 months. The first 12 months, it doubled.
Yeah. And I'm wondering, I know primarily, most of these are feral cats, and I know most shelters and rescues cannot accept feral cats. You don't happen to have the numbers of how many of the ones that were returned were feral and how many were domestic? Because I know that the local shelters and rescues can take in domestic cats.
I think for the numbers in Waco, all the cats that were T and R'd were feral cats. I think all of them, if not down.
All of them were, okay. Okay. Yep. My thoughts on this is, like I said, I understand all sides, but I'm hesitant to make any kind of firm changes until we see down the road, whatever that time is, we decide to revisit, and we're still having these issues as much as we are having them now, or it hasn't improved as much as what we've seen in other cities. I'm hesitant for us to make any kind of amendments and changes to something that has already been working and proven to work in multiple communities, not just one, for us to go ahead and make this amendment without seeing how it works in our community. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Robidoux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly appreciate everyone's comments, and I just want to say that if we have not done a good job of explaining that a lot of thought went into this, please know that as it relates to these community cats, because they're not adoptable and they're, they're not able to be rescued, that really the only choice was not to say, "We haven't given any thought, we, this is it. We either killing them or we sending them back to where they came from." Because the, the, the reality is, is for these animals, that is the choice. However, I do think there's an opportunity for the, the staff to reach out to the rest of the neighborhood where the cats came from. I think the thought process that went into drafting the ordinance was that if someone took the time to trap a cat and to bring it in, that as government, we would say, "We want the opportunity to spay, neuter this animal, return it. If it's, then still a problem, let us know. Certainly, we can go re-trap the cat for them, if that's what needs to happen." If, if the homeowner that traps the cat shows up and is willing to do, as Ms. Pratt stated, to fill out the nuisance ordinance right there and list out the, the 20 things that have happened and what they've tried to do to correct it, and they filed the nuisance ordinance, then it takes it out of one section of the ordinance that we've drafted, and it puts it into the nuisance ordinance, and there's a process there to determine if it is a nuisance. Then we're going to handle it via the euthanasia route. So I do believe that the changes we're asking for are to make the situation that we're currently faced with better. And that ultimately, the spaying and the neutering, I feel like, but as Ms. Abear said, we'll find out, I feel like the spay-neuter will make a lot of the problems better, but there's only one way to find that out until we spay and neuter them, to see if it does fix the problems. And so I would ask that we give this ordinance a chance, and certainly would appreciate your support, knowing that, again, I don't want perfect to become the enemy of good, and I firmly believe, and I wouldn't have brought the ordinance, obviously, if I didn't, that this is the direction we need to go as a community. I feel like the vast majority of the community is behind it and is willing for us to give it a chance. And I'm looking at the Waco, since there was dead silence. 2,200 cats were euthanized in Waco in 12. In 13, it was 990, down to 348, 140, 122, 79. So my guess is, it is about that three-year window, before you get to the no-kill status. But the difference between 2,200 to 990 in year one is obviously significant.
Thank you, sir. I don't want to be silent on you twice. I was, I was actually writing notes, though.
Thank you.
Um, how long can we hold a feral cat at the, at the Animal Center? How long do we hold it now?
I'm sorry, how long do we hold it now?
Do we and can we, both?
Right now, the ordinance as it's currently structured, before you vote on this, is we hold them for...
Three days?
Yes, sir.
For three days. Feral or pets, either one. This ordinance eliminates the stray hole period for feral cats.
So there will be no ability to hold them after capture? Immediately upon capture, bring to vet, have processes done, the healing and everything, and then release?
It doesn't say there won't be a time period. It's not required, I guess it's... Right now, it's required that we hold them for at least three days. This ordinance does not require that. But it probably is going to be a day or two before they can go through the process.
Not required? And the current ordinance requires a three-day hold?
Yes. And after three days, they're euthanized.
But if this passes, there will be no requirement to...
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Can we hold?
Yes, it's not a requirement, but yes, we can.
Mr. Terrio, you could go for now.
Just something to clarify, Mr. Benoit. I know we've been talking about cats. I had one question. They wanted to know why, why is it that cats can be at large and not dogs?
And not dogs? Have you ever seen a cat on a leash?
Have you ever seen a cat tack?
Our current leash law requires all cats to be on a leash. But this ordinance does not require cats to be...
Yes.
On a leash or in your...
I know that, I know that. Just wanted to make sure that cats can roam, but dogs can't.
That is correct.
Or less. So they have a higher...
It's kind of the norm around the country, then.
Yeah, I got you. That's all I have for now.
I did see one cat on a leash one time, though.
Yeah. And don't forget, this is Louisiana. We got spicy food here, so our cats are a lot spicier than the ones in Texas.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Okay. Have we acknowledged all the blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Terrio, you had alluded to a fee. Are you proposing any fee changes? Because we're about to move to vote. You're on.
Okay. I think I was actually confronted by our attorney, Mr. Ascot, and he informed me that because of the verbiage that already exists, that we may not, Mr. Ascot, if you want to explain it a little further, we may not need an amendment to do what I was asking. Mr. Ascot?
Sure. It was the provision that we were talking about, I think, is 101... In that subparagraph I, in that provision, it talks about the collection of the $75 fee where a private owner comes in and requests euthan, to euthanize the animal. In the ordinance itself, which would be in the Code of Ordinances published and available to the entire public, it does indicate, it already states in there, that it's the option of the Lafayette Animals Center to offer that animal up for adoption in lieu of euthanizing. So there is already published position that it's an option to euthanizing the animal. And what I would suggest or recommend is, it does not require amendment of this ordinance. What would happen is to carry out that further, so that the person that actually comes into the center and pays the $75, whatever they sign or whatever paperwork they have to execute because of the transfer of ownership, that we have something in bold that says, "Payment of the $75 that you're requesting the animal to be euthanized. Please be aware that we have the option to offer this animal up for adoption in lieu of euthanasia, and you still owe the $75." As long as they're aware of that, and they sign it, and they say, "I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I just don't want the animal," then we're good to go.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Boudreaux. That's all I have.
All right. Call the vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Next item, please.
Ordinance 143, 2017, An Ordnance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by recognizing revenues in the amount of $250,000 received from the Justice Department Equitable Sharing Fund and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion by Nakken, second by Conk. Council discussion? There isn't any blue cards?
No, sir.
Call the vote, please.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 144, 2017, An Ordnance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $34,937 from promotion cost to salaries holiday pay within the Lafayette Fire Department for additional funding needed and adjusting promotions within the Lafayette Fire Department.
Motion by Nakken, second by Lewis. Council discussion? There isn't any blue cards? Call the vote.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 145, 2017, An Ordnance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing promotions line item by $1,534 within the Public Works Department Capital Improvements Division to allow for the promotion of one civil engineer 2 employee to the position of civil engineer 3.
Motion by Nakken, second by Castile. Council discussion? There isn't any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 146, 2017, An Ordnance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President and utilities directed to execute the lease agreements for water towers and microwave towers.
Motion by Nakken, second by Conk. Council discussion? Seeing none, any blue cards? Please call the vote.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 147, 2017, An Ordnance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $1,260,323 in CDBG funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and appropriating within the Community Development Department.
Motion by Nakken, second by Conk. Council discussion? Isn't any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Call the vote.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 148, 2017, An Ordnance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to submit the 2017 annual plan grant application to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Motion by Nakken, second by Lewis. Council discussion? Call the vote.
District 1?
Wah.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 150, 2017, An Ordnance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances, Chapter 72, Property Management, specifically Article 2, Management and Disposition of Adjudicated Properties, particularly Section 72-15A, Notice of Sale or Donation of Adjudicated Property, Section 72-31C and D, Sale of Adjudicated Property by the Administrator, Section 72-40F, Initiation of Donation of Adjudicated Property, and Adding Section 72-20 Administration Budget Revisions.
Motion by Conk, second by Lewis. Council discussion? Mr. Terrio?
Yes, who do we have to speak on this? If you don't mind, could you give us a quick explanation as to what the changes are and, and what this does to the initial ordinance that we adopted?
Sure. I'm actually going to ask Ryan to lead that discussion, because most of these had to do with legal recommendations. Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Carly. Mr. Terrio, this is a, it's essentially a corrective and clarificatory ordinance that aligns the existing ordinance passed back when with, number one, with subsequent changes in state law. It also fixes literally a typo. It reconciles an internal inconsistency in the existing ordinance. There was a place where we had, when there was going to be a sale for an adjudicated property, and we said, "When the minimum bid is fixed at X amount, do this." And that was not corrected by me later in the ordinance, where it says, "When the minimum bid is Y amount, do this." Those needed to be reconciled, so this accomplishes that. Finally, the last section of it, and we can walk, I'd be glad to walk through each...
No, no, I don't need that, just the...
The last section is, at the behest of finance, they will need to, there are some sums, including an application fee to apply for donation of a property, and also anticipated costs of sale of a property need to be deposited by an applicant before a sale can be, can go forward. So finance needed a, needed the power to assign those funds to intake accounts, and in the event that there are sums left over after the, from the sale proceeds, after LCG's costs for the sale are covered, those go pro rata to the political subdivisions whose taxes were delinquent. So they needed an outgoing accountancy, a mandatory power as well. So that's so that finance and budget can do what they need to do in terms of dollars in and out.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
Okay. Anything else, Carly?
Sure.
That's it? Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Any blue cards on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please call the vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?[1661.11]
That's it, thank you. Appreciate it, guys. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, any blue cards on this matter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please call the vote.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Here we now going to move to appeals. This is a public hearing and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address. Counsel, the five-minute rule does apply. Liz, please read item number 25.
Appeal of the decisions by the Office of Alcohol and Noise Control on a $500 fine and a five-day suspension of alcoholic beverage permit for Grant Street Downtown Lafayette LLC, 113 West Grant Street, Lafayette, Louisiana 70501.
Thank you very much. Who is going to speak to this from the government? You, Paul?
Sally Legay.
Okay, you're hot, Ms. Lees Scott?
All right. First of all, Sally, if you'd come up. As a, as a matter of housekeeping, Mr. Chairman, I, I would recommend that in dealing with this appeal, the appellant, who has filed it with the clerk, has appealed two different decisions. Two separate violations occurring on two different days that was heard on the same day in two hearings. In order to make this as clean as possible, my recommendation is, is that the counsel address the decision on the first violation first and decide whether or not Ms. Legay acted reasonably in good faith in applying the provisions of the alcohol code. And then move to the second decision and, and address the appellant's appeal in that form. So that we take them in the order in which they occurred and in the order in which they were decided.
Okay, that, that's perfectly fine. Just one question, I guess, for clarity. Two separate citations issued on two different days but heard on the same day, was that due to the fact that the hearing dates that have been set was such that both could be heard, both violations occurred, where they could actually both be heard?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
That's how they kind of got doubled up?
Correct. The, the violation, the notice, or the violation, first violation for which the first notice of violation was issued was occurred on May 5th, and the second violation was on May 20th, so they were a mere 15 days apart, which resulted in the next hearing that those matters were set on happened to be the July 19th hearing date, I believe it was.
July 10th.
July 10th, I'm sorry, July 10th.
Okay, yeah, so that's, that's due to noted, and we'll take them up one at a time, starting with the first one. So as we give the department an opportunity to speak and give the facts of the case, the situation, just speak to the first situation only.
Well, because of a circumstance that happened with sending out the notices, I would like to talk about both of them at once, going over what actually happened, and then we can address each one of them individually, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. On the first violation, it occurred on May 5th, 2017. There were underage, there was an underage possession of alcohol and a curfew violation operation conducted by the Lafayette Police Department. There were 16 businesses checked that night. Of the 16 businesses checked, there were two businesses in violation, one being Grant Street at 113 West Grant Street. There were nine, nine persons under the age of 21 in possession of alcoholic beverages who were issued summonses, summons for that violation. Then on the second violation, which occurred on May 20th, 2017, there was an underage operation of alcohol, an underage possession of alcohol operation conducted by the Lafayette Police Department. There were 13 businesses checked that evening, and of the 13 checked, there were two businesses in violation, one being Grant Street, 113 West Grant Street. There were seven persons under the age of 21 in possession of an alcoholic beverage who were also issued, who were issued a summons for being in possession of the alcohol. On the first violation, on June the 12th, an informal hearing notice was mailed to the address that we had on file as their mailing address, sent certified return receipt. For the second violation, the notice was sent out on June 15th. An informal hearing notice was sent, mailed to the mailing address we had on file, and it was sent via certified return receipt. Our office received a phone call from a neighbor of one of the owners, of the owner of Grant Street, stating that they received mail that did not belong, that did not belong to her. Once it was determined to be for Grant Street, we contacted Merrick Kopezik, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his last name correctly, one of the owners of Grant Street, regarding the address that we had on file as their mailing address. This address was taken from the original application for their alcoholic beverage permit. This address was printed on their permit as their mailing address. And the, Mr. Kopezik also verified this address at renewal time, verifying all of the information on the renewal form, stating that that was the mailing address. Upon speaking with Mr. Kopezik, he, and at his request, the address was updated to change to the actual business address location rather than a separate address. We informed him that we would be sending out the notices, the notices to him via certified return receipt at the updated address that he had just given. He requested to pick up the letters. So Mr. Kopezik came to the Office of Alcohol and Noise Control and signed for both letters for the informal hearing on the same date. The first violation, for the first violation, informal hearing was held on July 10th. Mr. Kopezik and his counsel, Colley Salum III, was present and participated in the informal hearing. The second violation, the informal hearing was also held on July 10th, 2017. Mr. Kopezik and his counsel, Colley Salum III, was present and participated in the hearing. For the first violation, a decision was made to assess the business a fine of $500 for the first offense pursuant to Section 6-58 of the code. The second violation, the decision was to assess the business's suspension of their alcoholic beverage permit for five consecutive calendar days pursuant to Section 6-5, Number 2 of the code.
Okay, that's all you have?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, you, um. Mr. Chairman, if I might, just a point of clarification so that we're all on the same page. Because these two incidences that are the subject of the first violation and the second violation, first being May 5th and the second being May 20th, those occurred prior to the effective date of the new alcohol code. So these two violations, the processing of those violations, the hearing of those violations, and the applications of the penalties, all were done under the old code that was in existence at the time the violations occurred. Okay?
Okay, so our packet has the letters that were sent to the Grant Street address that was drafted upon when y'all got the new address?
Correct, that was after we had received the new address. The decision letters were actually sent to the address that was given as a corrected address.
Okay. Do you have those letters?
I do not have them with me.
In Stephanie Avenue, that was that address?
The Stephanie Avenue address was the original address that was written on the application when they applied for their permit.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Nakken, you're up, but as instruction of counsel, now that the issue has been explained and the, because it's two separate incidents and one, yeah. So you, okay, I thought you had a question, right, yeah. Okay, all right. Mr. Conk, you feel the same way? Did you have a specific question for her presentation? Or did you want to hear from the appellant? Okay, Kevin Clea, your board? Mr. Conk?
Thank you, sir. Sally, in looking at the date of the notice, you say July 10th. I see July 19th.
Yeah, Councilman Conk, I believe what y'all are looking at is the actual notice of the decision after the hearing of July 10th.
But the notation at the end, being shown the receipt by the owner of Grant Street has dated the 19th.
Right, I believe he also received hand delivery of the notice of decisions as well. You're looking at the notice of fine and the notice of suspension?
Yes, sir.
Those are actually the written decisions after the July 10th hearing that was issued on July 19th that he received by hand delivery on that day.
Of the findings of the hearing?
Right, you're not looking at the letter that was sent out that Ms. Legay was referring to that was sent out in June just to notify them that an informal hearing is going to be scheduled. This is actually after the hearing is done, after a decision has been made, it's been reduced to writing, and now he has received.
And he has acknowledged that?
Yes, sir.
On that date, okay, thank you.
And if there's any question, at least based on the information that Ms. Legay had provided me and the information of the documents that I have, if there's any questions about whether or not the appellant had proper notice and time to, and attended the hearing, it's my understanding that he received notification of a hearing of July 10th, sometime in the third week of June, which was at least two to two and a half weeks prior to the hearing, and in fact, did attend the hearing and participated in the hearing, not only by himself, but with advice of counsel. So clearly, the issue of was he advised and did he have an opportunity to participate? I believe the facts are that he did.
You want to go now? For her?
Ms. Sally?
Yes, sir.
When, when those citations were written, do we have any police video evidence camera that Grant Street served those underminers?
This is not saying that they served the minors. This is saying there were minors in possession of alcohol on the property. Under Ordinance 6-13C, it specifically states that a business that holds an alcoholic beverage permit is not allowed to have, to allow on-premise consumption by anyone under the age of 21.
I get that, and I'm, I'm looking at it from a different side. I guess my question is, today's society and business, how can that business honestly control that big parking lot from underage people bringing in clear vodka in water bottles or fixing their drinks in the parking lot? I get that if anybody should be written a citation, that we, the person that's caught drinking underage, if they're absolutely on the premises drinking underage, but we have no proof or evidence that that person was actually served alcohol from Grant Street. I have a problem with, with that because at the end of the day, that would be like, I can use a bunch of examples, and I know it pertains to alcohol ordinance, and I'm not saying that I want to give businesses free range and free pass, but I mean, honestly, you can use tailgate, you can use football games. I mean, it happens all the time. I'd hate to see businesses get punished for underage people doing naive things that honestly, the establishment has really no control oversee. I mean, he could walk the premises and everything else, but I think the people that should be getting punished, if we cannot prove that the bar actually served the person a drink underage, why shouldn't I responsibly, that citation be strictly, and we uphold the young lady or men who are drinking underage?
Well, one.
May I answer the question, I guess?
Sure.
Here, here's what I would offer as an answer to your, to your question. First of all, the two operations that resulted in the two violations were conducted. First operation was done for 16 establishments, and there were only two that were in violation, one of which was Grant Street, related to public possession of individuals under the age of 21. The second operation covered 13 different establishments, and again, only two, one of which was Grant Street. And the question becomes, why are the other 14 and the other 11 establishments, what are they doing differently that it's just ends up with two on those two operations and a common element being Grant Street? The next response. I understand, but look, here, here's the more important answer to your question. The ordinance, current ordinance that is applied to this particular appeal, which was the, is the old code, is not as restrictive as serving alcohol. Applying the code as written, it is prohibited for a permutee that holds an alcohol beverage permit to allow the public possession of alcohol, whether it's served, sold, whatever, by anybody on their premises. And so the fact of the matter is, is that when you apply the code appropriately, you have to say that a violation of the code is if you find someone under 21 in your bar possessing alcohol. Doesn't matter if you sold it to them or not, they snuck it in, it does not matter. The code does not distinguish between the two.
I'm gonna go off of code. I'm going off of merit and what I, what I believe. Sometimes we have laws in place, and sometimes they make perfect sense, and some other times. For example, Grant Street is a big location. Those other locations, do they have square footage as Grant Street have? Do they have back alleys? Well, no, no, I'm not questioning you or, 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 I'm giving my vast opinion on this thing.
Right.
That there are smaller clubs that have a lot of entrance, and they check IDs, and you coming in. You're checking IDs at Grant Street, but as far as for the parking lot, I mean, have you, anybody goes out to Grant Street or looks at that section, Rosa Parks is across? I mean, you have so many people.
All of these citations that were issued, or summonses that were issued, were issued to individuals who were inside of the club itself, not on the outside of the building. They were inside the club when the officers went in. I don't have the reports with me, but there were, if I'm not mistaken, there were a few, at least a few, who had bottles of, cans of beer that were, you know, labeled as an alcoholic beverage. They wouldn't have been able to bring them into the facility.
But this citation, which, thank you for clarifying, this is not related to parking lot outside?
Absolutely not, this was the inside.
These citations were issued within the bar?
Yes, sir.
I guess my next question is, do we allow food or drinks in and out of the club? To-go cups? Okay, all right. So, all right. So the citations were definitely issued because that person, he or she was under 21 within the club, and the officer at that point realized, checked ID, that they were underage?
Yes, sir. On all of the citations that were issued? For both violations.
All right. I guess my, you know, I want to hear the, the other side as well, but, you know, in regards to Mr. Prescott, by all means, it was not, I'm not saying that you wrote it, or you, I'm just trying to say that if someone on the outside, if this citation was issued in the parking lot, then I would have a major issue with it because at that point, how can you control what's going on without walking the parking lot and checking all the vehicles? And at that point, downtown Lafayette, you could park anywhere, and they can mix drinks, and then, and then that club at that point could be getting cited. Then that's an issue for me. But if we're talking in the club, then I need to hear a little bit more. So, thank you so much.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sally. No other members at this time. What we're gonna allow now as it relates to the first citation is for the appellant to come forward and present their arguments. Y'all could use multiple mics, Council. Y'all don't all have to stand at one mic. That one works also, if it's three of them, yeah. You could do two standing and, and one sitting, you could sit if you want. That mic, that mic there is on as well, so if. Thank you. Counsel?
Good evening, members of counsel. My name is Colley Salum. I'm here representing Grant Street, and I was present at the hearing on June 10th. We are, is my understanding now that we were under the, we are appealing this under the old code. However, at the time of the hearing, it was our understanding that the new code was in effect, and so we were not given the proper notice at that point. Given the fact that the burden today is on whether or not the director was in, was, was reasonable and in good, acting reasonably and in good faith on this particular appeal, we want to go back to the old law, the old ordinance, which says we were, we should be given 25 days notice from the date we are served, not the date we, we are supposed to have been served, but the actual date we were served. And obviously, we weren't given full 25 days. With that said, we had to show up because we were told that this was under the new law, which did not have a 25-day requirement, so we had to be prepared. However, given the short period of time, we weren't properly prepared for a number of reasons. Number one is, we've never seen the questions that, that Councilman Nakken asked about how many people were there, what, what, who was caught, where were they caught? We had no information to be able to defend ourselves on that point, or any of those points. We still don't know. In fact, Ms., Ms., Ms. Weber doesn't even have that information before us on this appeal. When we went to the hearing, we saw no evidence against us or for us, but it's certainly against us. We didn't see any of the officers who, who issued the citations. We never saw that, that citations were actually resulted in convictions. As we all know, people can be cited for anything, but when they go to court, that's why we have courts to determine guilt or innocence. So we're being punished on the accusation of underage drinking, not on the actual fact of underage drinking. And as she, as, as Ms. Sally said earlier, that there were seven citations issued. She didn't say there were seven convictions made. So we're being punished, as, as, as Mr. Nakken said earlier, we're being punished for the sins of somebody else. Now, let me go back to the statute. Were you talking about the old ordinance or the new ordinance? The ordinance clearly says that we will be punished if we allow or permit underage drinking. I'm paraphrasing, but the words. I'm paraphrasing, but the words "to allow" or "permit" are clear, that's a direct quote from the ordinance. Well, that shows an intent. In, in law, we call it mens reza, which means there has to be a purposeful act to try to commit, to violate a law, which means that the, the city, Ms. Sally would have to show, or whoever was prosecuting us, would have to show that we intended to allow or permit. And certainly, there may be businesses out there that, that condone it, they look the other way, they may even, that might be part of their business model to sell to underage drinkers. That is not the business model, and it's certainly not the intent of Grand Street. Grand Street has been around for a very, very long time, it's got a storied history in this community, and it wants to keep it that way. No one is trying to circumvent the law, no one is trying to, to dodge it, or to find some kind of loophole. Grand Street, on the, on the two nights in question, on both occasions, there were over seven hundred people that came in during the night. If you notice, May fifth, Cinco de Mayo, May twelfth, the next, uh, May, May twentieth, the next week afterward, was right after the school let out. So you have a massive number of people, hopefully all adults, but occasionally underage, under twenty-one, not, not minors now, we're not talking about minors under eighteen, we're talking about people between eighteen and nineteen, is what we're being accused of in, in part of this violation. Seven hundred, eight hundred people show up on these nights. We have, on, on staff, we have, we have the regular bartenders and the waitstaff. In addition to the normal waitstaff and bartenders used to serve the customers of Grand Street, we've also employed between five and six, basically bouncers, to literally walk around the facility to make sure that they're trying to protect the, the patrons, they, they're looking for security, they're also looking for underage drinkers. Before a person comes into the building, they're carded by a bouncer. We have two off-duty police officers that are, that man the front and walk the premises to assist those other five persons as well. So there's seven people that are hired to do nothing but look around and secure the, the premises for any violation of any sort. Once a person enters into the premises, they're, they're properly ID'd, show them a driver's license, show them other, some other sign of authentic identification. Those patrons over the age of twenty-one are given a wristband, and the bartenders are not allowed to sell to anyone that does not have that wristband. If you notice, the violations were not for sale to minors, but simply that minors had possession of alcohol and were caught on the premises. So we're being punished just because we're the location of somebody else's violation of the law. That's the, that's the hard part, as, as Mr. Nocan said earlier. So, we are doing our best not to allow or permit this activity, within reason. We cannot literally police and babysit seven hundred people, even though there are seven hundred adults, and there are seven hundred children, there are seven hundred adults. If an adult, and I'm using that word, over the age of eighteen, if they want to violate the law, they will violate the law, and there's not a whole lot we can do. If we were in front of the, if we were in front of Ms. Sally again, and we were, we were having our, our defense, we would be showing that two of those violations were made, were, were tickets that were issued, because we were walking an underage person out of the building at the time, and the ATC officer noticed that this person was being walked out of the building, because they were in violation, and we caught them, and we got ticketed, because we caught the violator. That's kind of an absurd, we were enforcing the law, we got punished, because we were enforcing, actually enforcing the, the ordinance. And these are, this is what we're, we're up against, we're trying to, to, to remedy, and we're asking this council to, first of all, reverse the decision of, of the department, and secondly, to dismiss these tickets, the tickets against us, not the tickets against the individual, or the, the two citations. I know we're talking about one at a time, but they're basically very similar in circumstance. The, addressing some other issues, there was an issue of an address, contrary to what Ms. Legge said, the, the certified mail was actually sent to a neighbor's address. It wasn't, it was the wrong address, but it wasn't even the right wrong address, although the, the address, the Lawrence Street address that was given, I understand, was, was actually the, the, the parent of Mr., of Merrick, but it was actually sent to the neighbor of the parent. So that, that's how the confusion got started, so we didn't even know that there was an issue of the wrong address being mailed. Once the day that my client was, was notified, he voluntarily went down to the ATC office and actually signed for the paperwork, and that was the, the June, the June nineteenth date that we were talking about. And of course, the hearing was heard on July tenth, less than twenty-five days after he received that notice. We strongly defend that we did not violate Article six thirteen, simply because Article six thirteen requires us to really, we have to, we were defending and protecting our, our patrons from being able to have underage drinking, but we can't catch them all, and we shouldn't be punished for, for not, for missing a few. Why there's a disparity in the, the two institutions that caught and the other businesses that didn't, I don't know. Maybe they were very small businesses, they may be just catering to older, there's several, there are several establishments here that people under the age of fifty don't go to. So if they were, if they were looked at, then certainly they would have no one even close to the age of twenty-one or eighteen that would be present there. Getting back to the, the appeal, the final thing I want to say is, is I understand the old law and the new law, is that the hearing, the informal hearing that took place on, on June, June, excuse me, on June tenth, excuse me, July tenth, was to be before the director. And as I understand, the director is Mr. Lowell Douillon, and is not Ms. Sally Legge. Mr. Douillon was not present at that particular hearing for either of those matters, and so we were not allowed the opportunity to have Mr. Douillon speak, to us be able to speak to Mr. Douillon, even though I think he was ultimately the one that issued the, the fines and the suspensions in this particular matter. So, in looking at every other, just the equity of it, and looking at the technical procedure that wasn't followed, we're asking this, we're asking the, the council to dismiss the, the suspensions and the fines on these particular matters. Thank you.
Mr. Escott?
Yes, sir.
On the issue of the departmental director on this matter?
Yes, sir. I believe the code says it's the director or his designee.
Is, are his designees in there?
Yes, sir. And in this case, it was Ms. Sally Legge, and she's actually the one that also signed the notice of fine and notice of violation.
In, when, when Ms. Legge was making her presentation, she referenced, in this particular case, there were nine individuals found to be in possession, nine underage individuals. Were those individuals cited for minors in possession of alcohol?
My understanding is that they each received their own individual citation.
Mr. Terrio?
Mr. Escott, from experience, some of this council have recognized that this has happened before, and that there have been violations, the exact same, what they're dealing with here, under the old code, maybe not the establishments, and maybe they were, but we've seen them posted, you know, in the news articles, and, and they have complied with the fines, I guess, that were issued against them, which would basically be the same circumstances that we're talking about tonight. I'm just saying that what their citations for, and what they're appealing to the council for, has happened before numerous times, where the, Ms. Legge and them have sent out notices under the old code, and people have been fined and had suspensions for the same thing.
I would assume as much, but not being in this position for very long-
Right, because you haven't been there.
But I, I can only assume that, that-
But we know that's happened, because we've seen the same things, you know, being posted in KATC or anything like that. So I guess my question is, is that if it's happened before, sir, and it's been to the same, you know, the same set of circumstances, the exact same thing, where you've had underage individuals that have been caught with alcohol, how can this council not be consistent in siding with denying appeal?
Mind if I address that?
Fine.
Clay Burgess, I, I think what's occurring here is a, a, a grave misunderstanding of your ordinance, okay? There is no punitive statute that allows someone to be punished, whether it be by fine or suspension, for status. In other words-
Mr. Burgess, Ms., I'm sorry, could you just make an appearance while we're-
Yeah, my apologies. Clay Burgess, representing Grand Street Dance Hall in America, put in for a blue car, but I'm jumping the gun, I'm sorry. And what I mean by that is, the statement that the ordinance can be enforced simply by someone being on the property is illegal. That's, that's, that's a wrong interpretation of those laws. And it's not just my opinion, the Third Circuit recently, back in March, ruled in a civil case, that this exact ordinance, the exact one that we're here by today, it was a civil case, that a bar patron does not have a duty to patrol their premises, okay? And here's what we mean by that. Literally, the interpretation that you were given by Mr. Escott, who we have deep respect for, says if they're on your property, that's it. It doesn't work that way. You must be, the statute is, you must allow them or permit them to do so, simply driving up, or even walking through the front door, or somebody pulling it out in the bathroom and giving it to you, is, is not a violation. The Third Circuit, addressing this very ordinance in a civil case, stated that a bar owner does not have a legal duty to patrol its premises to ensure underage patrons do not possess or consume alcohol in violation of LCG Ordinance six thirteen. So my point is, that the foundation is starting from the entire wrong premise. This idea that they're just there, and so they're in violation, is incorrect. It's an incorrect interpretation of this ordinance, it's an incorrect interpretation of the law. I mean, think of, quite frankly, I know you brought this up, think of how crazy this is, just, just so you'll know, okay? So he's facing a suspension in, on Friday, five days. He gets a letter with no facts. There's no names in it, there's no officer's names in it, there's no reports in him, there's no times in him, there's no location in it, nothing. It just says, "On this day, someone underage was drinking on your property." We go to a hearing, it's impossible to defend, no evidence is entered, no tapes are entered, no reports are entered, no names are entered. What she said to you just now is more than what they heard at the hearing. You basically get your letter and say you're guilty. We couldn't bring any bartenders, we couldn't bring any bouncers, we couldn't bring anybody, because we don't know what they're talking about. I mean, obviously, we got the letter, but we don't know what, what they're talking about. For example, we've interviewed some of the guys that are walking the floor, they're literally walking the floor, sticking their fingers in people's drinks, he's about to get sued for that. And why are they sticking their fingers in people's drinks? Because they've been told that it's, that it's wrong, that they can't be on the premises. No, that's not it. He must allow or permit them. That's when you're in violation, okay? And so, what's happened is, and I, look, it's all well-intended, right? No one wants minors to drink, or people under twenty-one, but what's happened is, it's become a feeding frenzy now with the enforcement, right? He'll catch people, and be walking them out, and they'll be like, oh, well, she's on the premises, you're guilty. It's become, I mean, there's literally, at the hearing, and I wasn't there, so, he was told, well, the only way you're gonna stay in business is to raise everything to twenty-one, like, we're basically running you out of business. Okay, so, so the point I'm trying to make is that, it, it may be true, that maybe everyone is, is, maybe everyone's just showing up and paying, quite frankly, right? Because they're, you know, they're, look, we're gonna go under, we don't know what to do, we can't afford a lawyer, you know, maybe they're not as brave as Merrick, that's fine. But I can tell you that people have challenged this ordinance in civil court, and in March, the Third Circuit said, hey, man, you don't have a duty to patrol the entire premise. It's an impossible duty to have. I mean, think about it, it's impossible, they start selling beer at Cajun Field, right? Somebody hands it to their kid, you're done, under this interpretation. But that's not the interpretation, the interpretation is allow or permit. So the point we're trying to make is, you go to a hearing, you get a letter, we don't know who, we don't know where, we don't know times, we have a date, it's impossible to defend, we're supposed to come here and appeal, you ask some good questions, where was it? First time I heard it was inside the building, was when she just said it. There's no record, there's nothing, there's no evidence introduced to these hearings, there's no reports entered, there's no names entered, and so you've got a letter. So he's gonna get his liquor license suspended, because he gets a letter. And we're supposed to defend him and say what? We have no names, we have no dates, you get to ask more questions, get more information than we do, but, but the point is simply this, the, the, the interpretation of the statute, the status interpretation, is entirely incorrect, entirely incorrect.
Okay, sir, let me, let me hold you on, right there.
Sure.
At this point, because of everything you've just said, which was quite a lot-
Sure.
We're gonna defer, and I need to ask Mr. Escott-
Right.
With what he said about the Third Circuit, do we have an invalid argument before-
First of all, let me say this, we have gone far afield as to the scope of what this appeal is supposed to be addressing. The scope of this appeal is nothing more than this council determining whether or not Ms. Legge acted reasonably and in good faith in rendering the decision she rendered. If Mr. Burgess and Mr. Salum and the owner of this bar have a challenge as to the constitutionality or appropriateness of the statute-
That's a different matter.
-that's for another day, that's for another forum, perhaps.
Got you.
But it's not in this appeal. They did not raise it, as far as I know, in the hearing, they didn't lodge any formal request to assert that defense, and that is not the subject of this appeal. So, with that being said, Mr. Burgess and I basically said the same thing, and that is, you will remember, I almost read it verbatim from six dash thirteen C, and I did say, "allow or permit anyone on the premises under the age of twenty-one to possess alcohol." He and I are not necessarily saying anything different.
Right.
But, my point being that we are way beyond the scope of the appeal, as to what this council is to consider.
So, go ahead and, and, and restate it, that we are here to decide if whether Ms. Legge acted appropriately, more or less?
Reasonably and in good faith, under the provisions of this chapter.
And, to your knowledge, and from your experience, in all the investigations that you have done, she has done so.
Mr. Terrio, I, I don't believe it's my job to interpose my opinion-
I understand, I understand, and that may not have been a fair question-
Yeah.
But naturally, you would not be, I guess, advising the council if you had thought otherwise.
And, it, it's true that my job is to advise the council, and I, I don't want to artificially impose, and I, and I'm asking each council member not to read into any of my answers an impression that I believe this should be decided one way or the other. That is the purview of each council member sitting there, it is your decision whether to grant the appeal or deny the appeal. I, I, it's my job to give you the facts and the code as it applies to those facts, and so I, I hope I've done that, and I, I, I don't want to influence anyone as to what they believe, as to whether or not Ms. Legge acted reasonably and in good-
Okay, so, you made a good point. So when Ms. Legge got up in front of the council and explained everything that she did, in your opinion, did she follow the code appropriately? To your knowledge?
From the technical aspect, if you're talking about the notice issues-
Yes, yes.
Okay. Technically, the notices were sent out via registered certified mail, at least twenty-five days prior to the hearing. Because of the address issue, they were not received, but were received by hand delivery well before the hearing. The purpose or intent of the ordinance is simply to make sure that the, that the person being notified is given proper notice. They clearly were given proper notice, because they had ample time to appear and appear with council. Council did not lodge any complaint that they weren't prepared, nor did they reserve any complaint about notice. If they did, I don't think it matters at that point, because what the council has to also understand is, this is not a formal evidentiary hearing. The code actually refers to it as a, quote, "informal hearing." That doesn't, that means there is no testimony, there is no sworn dictation, there is no formal rules of evidence, it's an informal hearing. Some people would call that a meeting. So, the code doesn't contemplate that it has to follow the rigors of a district court's evidentiary rules and, and procedures. So, yes, I believe that the general parameters of the required- So, yes, I believe that the general parameters of the requirements under the code were met, and that they were able to participate in the hearing.
Okay, and all the other issues or parameters that this gentleman was bringing up as to, you know, who did what, and how many, and all this stuff, that has nothing to do with what we're deciding here, the appeal deals with, did Ms. Legge follow protocol?
Your decision is, did Ms. Legge act reasonably and in good faith in applying the provisions of the alcohol code?
Good, that's all I have.
Can I just say just briefly?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Let's talk about it, reasonable and in good faith, okay? There was no evidence entered at that hearing, whether you want to call it informal or not, that Merrick was allowing or permitting anyone to do it. With no evidence at all that he knew about it and allowed it. Evidence, I don't care, accusation, that he knew about it and allowed it. Without an officer saying it, without anybody saying it, how could you be reasonable in saying his license should be pulled? I'm not, I'm not suggesting to you that she wasn't there, but there's got to be some teeth to the words. I mean, how can you be reasonable and say, he allowed it, that's the statute, he allowed it to happen? No one has even made the accusation that he knew and allowed it, no one has even made the accusation that he knew and permitted it. So the point of the appeal, the point of, and it's not far afield in my opinion, you still have a standard. It's not that she issued the letter, albeit was issued wrong, and 25 days was violated, but there's still a standard, okay? It's not saying she's unreasonable like she's a mean person, it's like, is there, essentially, is there reason enough to think in good faith he allowed it or permitted it? And all I'm trying to get at is, with no facts entered at all, nothing, I'm not talking about a judge, I'm talking about no facts entered at all, how could you say that's a reasonable decision? I mean, can anyone even stand here, her or anybody else, and say he knew about it and allowed it? Nobody, or he permitted it? I mean, permit, y'all issue permits all the time. Permit is, hey, there's a mental requirement, I'm coming down, you're allowing somebody to do something. But the point I'm trying to make is, that these things are, these things are, listen, nobody wants to violate law. These things are rushing through and no one's challenging them. And it's not just was protocol followed, that's different. You do act, you do act as an appellate decision, in terms of whether or not there was reasons, and it was reasonable to believe that he permitted it. And I haven't heard any reasons from anyone, and that's what's happening at these hearings, you're just handed a letter. And that's fine, if that's how they want to handle their protocol, but you have to have a reason at some point. And so we don't know anything about the facts of these people, and we literally would have brought the whole staff, but we don't even know what they were claiming, we don't know if they were claiming it was in the parking lot, or the alley, or whatever. And so the point I'm trying to make is, and I apologize for going over, but this is going to continue to come up. Like, there's no way that this doesn't ultimately become some type of problem, not because we're trying to create a problem, because ultimately, you're going to put somebody out of business, and they're going to say, okay, can you meet this Third Circuit requirement? You know, but that doesn't mean we have to jump to the Third Circuit. I'm saying, there still has to be a reason, a reason to say he knew and permitted it. Like I said, we're literally getting in trouble now for dipping our fingers in drinks. We can sell food, we can sell soft drinks, you know, the status alone doesn't do it. Whether you agree with it or not, I'm just saying, ultimately, the issues that you brought up are headed all the way through. Can somebody have their license revoked for literally somebody just being on the premises?
Once you guys got notice, did.
Mr. Terrio, let me share this, because Mr. Burgess referenced something. I just want to remind the members, as you continue your dialogue here, that we're talking about the first offense. He kind of made reference to pulling of the permit, but I just wanted, yeah.
I'm willing to adopt the second offense argument, these things or that, so don't respeak.
I just want to remind everybody that we, through advising, we're taking them up one at a time, I just wanted to state that. And as it relates to the scope of what's happening here, it's going to be up to the individual members to base their decision on, like Mr. Esqot indicated, did the director act reasonable? But as far as was said here, the reason it's so robust is because the director has an opportunity to present everything that happened, how it happened, and who did what. And these appellants are basically, as far as I appreciate it, is giving their version of how it happened, why it happened, and who did what. This council is obligated to focus on is what the director did reasonable and appropriate. So, Mr. Terrio, you still have the floor.
Another question, once you guys received notice, did you request specifically what the violations were for, and if so, from who and when?
So I, we have issued actually a public records request.
And when was that done?
I'd have to get the date. Now, he had to come hire us, in other words, we weren't, we weren't.
Esqot, were you aware of that?
That was after the hearing.
Yeah.
Hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, I doubt very.
I'm sorry, I think his question was, and it might be more for.
Director Cal?
Yeah, he was asking, when, I think you were referring to the notice of the hearing, when he actually went and picked them up from Sally?
Well, that, but also wanted to notice, he'd mentioned about why, you know, the suspension, why, you know, what was involved with all this, what officer, this and that? Did they request information to specify what exactly they were being suspended and fined for?
I mean.
And if so, when?
I could tell you, after, I'm going to let him address it, I could tell you, after he hired us, we issued a, not in time for the hearing, but I have an outstanding public records request to the city for a number of violations that have, I just got an email back. Ms. Robelay is handling that, she handles y'all's public record stuff, and issued me a lengthy email about why, you know, why, you know, why we have to go through them and look at certain information, and why it can be objected to or not. But one thing that I could bring up, though, is, it's also within the purview of the council to send it back down for a full hearing.
That's the new code.
Well, but, so, okay, but at the, okay, but at the hearing, they were handed the new code and told them they were under the new code. So I think you got a little issue with what code they were under.
I wasn't under the, I wasn't at the hearing, and I believe.
No, not.
Yeah, I actually have it. Okay. I was handed the new code.